Okay, we'll call this meeting to order of the Burnsville Planning Commission for Monday, February 11th. Thank you, everyone, for being with us this evening. Our first item is approval of the agenda. Staff, any changes or additions?
No changes.
None, anything from commissioners? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next item is...
Can I interrupt for a second?
You can.
I'm abstaining from that because I wasn't here last week.
On the minutes, on the next one, okay.
Oh, on the minute.
You can approve, you can vote on the agenda.
Okay.
Did you want to...
Cover the gun a little bit.
Good, good timing. Item two is approval of the minutes of the January 28th Planning Commission meeting. Any changes or additions to that from staff or commissioners?
None.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and Commissioner Henderson abstaining. All right, that brings us to item three, finalizing the 2019 Planning Commission work plan. Ms. Arnold?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. So before you in your packet, the 2019 work plan appears just as it did when it visited you two weeks ago. So there have been no changes added after the city council's all-day work session. There are going to be a few items that you may see before you in the coming months that council has asked us to look into or to modify the ordinance for, but they are not changes that are studied by the planning commission and aren't on your work plan. So what we're asking, what staff is asking this evening, is for a recommendation of approval of the 2019 work plan that has not changed since the last time that you have seen it.
Thank you very much. Is there any, are there any questions from Ms. Arnold? Any discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, I would move that the planning commission recommend a city council approval of the 2019 work plan as drafted by staff, and I guess you'll be presenting it.
Next week.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Getting used to this gavel.
Yep.
All right, that brings us to item four, which is a public hearing for Todd Christopherson for variance to allow construction of one single-family home on the vacant property located between 1228 and 1304 Blue Bell Bay Road and a conditional use permit to allow work in the flood plain of Crystal Lake. Ms. Garros?
Thank you, members of the commission. We have our applicants are here this evening, Todd and Nancy Christopherson.
Welcome.
And they're looking for, as you indicated, a conditional use permit and a number of variances. The subject site consists of two lots of record, and this is a general overview. And just to note for the planning commission that this blue line is the city limits between Lakeville to the south and Burnsville to the north. And referenced in the staff report is the stormwater pond located across the street from the subject site. And so just wanted to give you kind of an overall idea of where that is in relation to the site. The subject site itself, as I said, consists of two different lots. These were platted at different times, but they have been owned in common for a number of years by the Whatky family. The applicants would like to purchase the property and develop the site with one single-family home. The survey that is part of your packet shows the area of Lot 10 where the building pad is proposed to be located, and then there is this existing channel that is referenced in the background report, and the stormwater pond would be located on the lower left-hand side of the screen. And there is a pipe that brings stormwater across underneath the road and into this drainage ditch at this location. There are platted easements that are existing out there. We have a 10-foot drainage and utility easement that I'll be referring to later. There is also 10 feet along the south side. And of note, this area between the lot and this is the curb line of the street is public right-of-way. So we have a fairly deep area of public right-of-way adjacent to that lot. Whoops. And then on the other lot, there is a 15-foot drainage and utility easement, and that's platted over primarily the channel area and the existing stormwater improvements, and also another 10-foot drainage and utility easement. So out here, we've really got 25 feet of drainage and utility easement, and then 10 feet on the south side here, and that would be it. The other thing that's unique about this property is this does show the ordinary high-water mark in this location here. In working with the DNR for this project, this channel is not an original part of the lake but was put in at a later date to accommodate stormwater improvements. So for the purpose of measuring lakeshore setbacks, DNR is not considering the ordinary high-water mark that's part of the channel, but rather just looks at extending this across at this location. So that is something that just wanted to bring your attention to. What the applicant would like to do is to construct one single-family home on the property. They have made application to combine both parcels by plating them. However, that occurred a little bit later, so we're not able to process that in the same timeframe with this variance and conditional use permit. But they're looking at a single-family home, an attached garage in this location, a future attached garage addition, if you will, in this location. And here is a platform, meaning it's like a deck, but it's less than 36 inches above grade, and it is not subject to setback standards as a platform. If it were taller and/or attached to the building, then it would be subject to setbacks, but it is not as proposed. There is also a future screen porch that is shown in this location here to be developed at some future date, and it currently is encroaching within drainage and utility easement. But as we'll see, this is proposed to be vacated, and then that, that application for, for that addition will work. The other thing to note is this lighter blue-colored line here. This is the shore impact zone. On all lakes in shoreline areas, the half of the standard setback, lakeshore setback, is the shore impact zone. So in this case, on Crystal Lake, it's 37 and 1/2 feet behind the ordinary high-water mark line. And in that area, you're not allowed to have development encroaching within that. So that's why that is shown in this location. On the site plan, what they're proposing basically is to fill in this area of the site and then to create a dry creek bed in this area here. So the new stormwater improvements, if you will, will look much closer to what the original shoreline was than this existing feature out here that is the current channel. In addition to that, the applicant would like to put in a driveway that is curved, basically with two access points at this location. Terms of the variances, there are a number of setback variances that are needed. As we indicated in the staff report, these are two substandard lots of record. They do not conform to the ordinance, and the reason for that is they were platted well before the city adopted its first shoreline ordinance in 1984. So for the house itself, the applicant followed recommendations, actually, that staff has applied through the years since about 2001, when the previous applications were considered for this subject site. And that basically is to keep the house, any developed part of the property away from that shore impact zone, and they have done that. In order to do that, they are requesting a 31-foot lakeshore variance, which allows the house to be setback 44 versus 75 feet from the ordinary high-water mark, a 37 and 1/2 lakeshore, lakeshore variance, and this is to allow for the future garage addition that's shown, and a three-foot front yard variance, and that would be to the southerly property line, to allow for the, the home to be located a little bit closer to the road than the 30-foot standard. A 10-foot east side yard variance, and this is for the covered screen porch. As indicated right now, it goes right up to the common property line. However, this is a temporary type of a situation because when the property is replatted, this variance, if you will, is no longer applicable or would go away. There are also two other items in the ordinance that variances are requested for. One of the items is, there is a 35% maximum front yard hard surface coverage standard in the ordinance, and this, similar to the previous one, is a temporary situation. Once the lots are combined, there will be plenty of room and there won't be any need for this variance. But right now, there is not enough space shown on the particular lot, so that's why the variance is included. And the last one is a variance from the single-family minimum requirements for a home to be constructed without a cellar or basement. And in this case, they're proposing slab-on-grade. This is a very low-line property, as are other properties. It's also a property that's an infill site. The adjacent lots are already constructed, developed at their elevations, and they're requesting to be in that same general area as far as their elevations, and that would not support a cellar or garage, excuse me, or basement. The floor plans were provided with the application, and they're looking at basically a three-bedroom, three-bathroom house. The foundation plan is here. Then we have the first floor plan, basically the garage on the west side, the deepest part of the, of the proposal, and then front entry and the kitchen on the first floor. And then the second floor includes the bedrooms and a loft area and additional bathrooms. And this would be what the side of the home facing the lake will look like. And this gives you the other two sides of the home, and then the front of the home facing Blue Bell Bay Road. The exterior materials are all materials that are allowed by the ordinance and will be consistent with other properties and also meet ordinance standards. In terms of the platted lots themselves, we included this in your background. We have Lot 10, which is the westerly lot that the actual building pad is proposed on. And then there is Lot 1 of Whatky Lakeshore Estates. And what I wanted to just draw your attention to is that the time this was platted, this is what the lakeshore kind of looked like, and that will give you an idea of what they're trying to kind of replicate. For the grading plan, what's shown is basically, as I had indicated, they are going to be providing fill in this area here. So really, the yard extends from now where this lot line is, and this would be the proposed future porch addition. So it really extends from this point all the way over, you know, to approximately this point, gives a much more buildable area. And the setback, once this is replatted, changes from a zero lot line setback to about maybe three-foot setback because this will be the new east lot line. In terms of the grading itself, what they're proposing to do is to dig out a larger area or excavate a larger area below the ordinary high-water mark. This is something that has been reviewed. They've made application for permits from the Army Corps of Engineers and also from the Department of Natural Resources. Both of those agencies are supportive of the application and have advised staff that they anticipate the permits will be issued here in the next couple of weeks for this work. So the applicant has worked quite extensively with, with those, those agencies and also city staff. In addition, this item did go to the Parks and Natural Resource Commission last week, and they are recommending approval of the project as well. So basically, what we're showing is the new dry pond configuration. Here will be an area of riprap before water outlets ultimately into the lake. There is a short, about four-foot-tall retaining wall that's proposed in this location. And basically, what will occur then is this site will be filled in this location and then excavated here. And that work does require the conditional use permit to allow work within the flood plain. With that, there is a condition that is included that they provide as constructed plans once the project is complete, and that's something that is required for flood plain purposes for the city administering the FEMA requirements. The applicant has already provided us a FEMA elevation certificate, and there is no net increase or effect to the flood plain. On this graphic, this is the easement graphic, and what is shown here is basically, we have, there is a 10-foot drainage and utility easement, and what they would like to do is to vacate five feet of that. So then there would be a five-foot, or excuse me, actually, yeah, a five-foot setback in this location. The city engineer has no issues with the proposed vacation. They do also have the minimum distance, which is 15 feet, between this structure and the adjacent structure on the other property, so they do meet that requirement. Something I'd like to draw the attention of the planning commission, too, is there is an existing outbuilding or accessory building close to the lake on the adjacent property. It's about 800, or excuse me, 500-plus square feet. The proposed garage, future garage addition is less than 400 square feet, and at first, we had advised the applicant to look at, can they expand the garage in this location to stay further from the lake? And they really don't want to do that. They want to maintain the proposed half-circle driveway as shown, and knowing that this is existing on this lot, staff has no objection. They are keeping this, again, outside of the shore impact zone. Another area is this existing 15-foot wide easement that will be vacated. And then the area in green actually will be a new drainage and utility easement that's provided over the entire lot, and that's primarily to cover the, the storm pond, or excuse me, the dry, dry pond and the utility improvements. The city of Burnsville does maintain the current outflow and pipes, and we will continue to do that in the future. This identifies just the existing and proposed utility plan. Basically, they'll just need to bring in their sewer and water from the road, and then this shows basically an extension of that stormwater pipe to get it further out so that water comes closer to the lake. There'll also be a little bit deeper angle that's provided, and the whole intent is really to try to get water to move instead of being kind of stagnant in that, in that area so that they can avoid odors and just kind of the litter that comes about being next to a stormwater outflow area. The landscape plan is something that will be unique and that staff is very favorable to. They have shown basically the entire area except for this small area here, and this is actually the property line. So a small area here and a small area in this location will be seeded and, or seeded and sotted and irrigated. In addition to that, the entire area really around the home is going to be planted with, with hardy plant materials. It'll be landscaped, irrigated, but it'll be a short, short type of landscaping that's there. And pretty much everything else is going to be planted in native seed mixtures. So this buffer area, if you will, for all variances in the shoreline district, you need to provide a minimum 20-foot-wide buffer to protect the shoreline, and they're actually proposing that that cover the entire shore impact zone for the most part, and then also the majority of this lot. There are existing trees that they're proposing to retain to the extent that they can, and a couple that they are proposing to install. And I think this graphic really shows it best. This is their area of their buffer seed mix, but this is the area that's going to be basically turned back to native plantings. They'll remove the invasive species out there, and this should be a much improved appearance and functionality for the neighborhood and for the stormwater improvements. With that, the recommendation from staff is we're recommending approval of the variances and the conditional use permit, subject to, actually, there are nine conditions. We included number nine in the staff report, but I unintentionally omitted it in putting it under the recommendations. So basically, number one, that the lots be combined into one parcel, that's required by the ordinance. Two, the as-construed plans be submitted, which is required for our FEMA administration. Three, that they provide written evidence that the DNR and Army Corps of Engineer permits have been provided. And number four, that there's at least a 10-foot separation between the future porch and where the, the pipe for the stormwater improvement will be provided. Number five, that the applicant will provide additional stormwater modeling. Those are detail elements that are needed by the city engineer, and the applicant has no issues with providing that. Six and seven are that the easements are vacated, as I had indicated. Number eight, they will need a city right-of-way permit prior to grading a construction for the driveway that's proposed. And then number nine, again, is a condition that's included in the report as a condition, but I missed adding it here. So it's that the buffer area shown on the area calculation plan be installed and maintained in perpetuity. So with that, I am available for questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Garros. First off, just want to compliment you on the thoroughness of the background and the applicant as well. I know this project brings together a lot of levels of government, and this is a lot of work to get to this point. So appreciate all the work that's gone into that. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Benke?
Deb, I'm confused. I mean, I saw this at Park 2. I was there for something else, and I didn't understand some of this, some of what's being presented here. I understood that they're putting in the dry stream bed, but what's the function of the 80 feet of 12-inch HTPE pipe, the, basically, the plastic storm pipe, if we're going to use this dry stream bed for drainage?
I will let the applicant respond to that, being an engineer that he is.
Sure.
And I'm not. And by the way, the applicant really has worked very hard with all the agencies in this and...
If you want to come up there and identify yourself for the record, welcome.
Thank you. Todd Christopherson. I live at 14516 Chateau Lane in Burnsville. And so we were trying to solve a number of problems that were currently exist there.
Right.
And one is that there's, a lot of times, there's odors from the stagnant water.
Right.
And so what we did with the dry stream bed is we set the elevation a little higher than the normal lake level.
Okay.
So the normal conditions, that would be dry, but there's a small amount of flow that is just trickles through there even when it's not raining, and that would go through that small pipe.
Okay. So that, that pipe is, is in or not in a utility easement, then?
It will be. It will be.
Okay, so there's still a utility easement on that side of the lot line, the current lot line?
Yes. In the new plat, the entire lot is an easement, that east lot.
Okay. And then the only other thing, too, is, I guess, was when you brought up the whole issue of the, the entire area, the, the buffer seed mix is being, you're number nine?
Yes.
So wouldn't that just simply be a conservation easement?
The applicant is not proposing that to be a conservation easement.
Okay.
They're proposing it to be a drainage and utility easement.
Sure, but why wouldn't we just add that instead of having it as a condition?
I think that the conservation easement is more restrictive, and the applicant has not decided to go that way. So we're not requiring that from a staff rule.
And the only other thing was the issue of the two driveway entrances does not have any issue from the staff?
No, the city engineer does not have an issue.
Okay.
Additional questions for the applicant or Ms. Garros? All right. I just want to say, we'll, we'll open the public hearing here in a second, but I just, I know this is a, a unique convergence of properties, too, so I appreciate the work that has gone into, to this. So I'm, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:55 PM. If anybody would like to speak, could come up and identify themselves for the record. All right, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing at 6:50. We'll round to 6:56. Commissioners, discussion, what's your pleasure? 6:56. Commissioners, discussion. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Benke?
Let me find it. There it is. Mr. Chair, I would like to suggest that the planning commission recommend a city council approval of the CUP and the variances for this project at 1228 and 1304 Blue Bell Bay Road, and I'm assuming it's going to have a single address, shortly. And subject to the, the nine conditions, staff is prepared.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And this goes before the city council on...
Next week, on February 19th.
February 19th at 5:30 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is updates. Staff?
We have a draft agenda for next, next time's planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
One more.
All right.
In addition to that, just wanted to note for the planning commissioners that the city hall will be closed on President's Day, which is Monday, the 18th, and your next meeting is on February 25th. Council meeting, where the item will go, is on the 19th. That would be it.
And of note for commissioners is the city council work session tomorrow does have a, a presentation related to item five on next, the next agenda regarding the landfill issue, so you might want to attend or, or tune it, tune to your local Burnsville community television to watch that proceeding. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned at 6:57 PM.